Business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. If you wish to speak during the citizens' comment period, please do so by signing up on a sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Short, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. My pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Allen will not be joining us this evening and Mr. Lee will be joining us via the remote phone. So you may hear a delay in his votes tonight. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And is there a second?
A second.
I have a second, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion passes four to four oh. Item three is matters from mayor. All I have this evening is last Monday, Mayor Wood and I had the pleasure of hosting the Appalachian Christian School sixth grade class in council chambers where they held a mock city council election. It was a lot of fun and Mr. Wood is going to give a little bit more information on that. I think he has as much fun as the kids as always. So moving on to item four, that's matters from council.
Yeah, just add on to what you said. It was nice having the kids in here. The sixth grade class came in and I think we've got the fifth grade class coming up.
The twentieth.
The twentieth and anybody's welcome to come in and watch if you like. The kids are great because they learn as they go along. They get a real good idea of what's happening then. As we did once before, the on the agenda was we were going to build a pet friendly splash pad at the pool that costs six and a half million dollars. And we explained to them where the money comes from, that, you know, how their parents earn money and, well, I mean, from start to finish. And actually, they voted against the pet friendly splash pad, which you would think would be surprising out of a bunch of sixth graders. But it was one of the best things about it is, and it's held true the three times that we've done it, is when we're done, we get the kids in the group to raise their hand if they supported it and the ones that they voted against it. And every time, the ratio of kids in the crowd has been equal to the ratio of for and against it with their own council. So it shows them how, you know, if it's done right, that the public is well represented by their own council. So it was just, it was a good time, good fun. I look forward to the next one.
Yep. All right. Are you with us, Mr. Lee?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay.
No comments.
All right. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
You sure do.
Thank you so much for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that passes four to zero. Moving on to item six, and that is to receive a presentation and consider introducing an ordinance rezoning 300 North Augusta Avenue, tax map parcel forty-six dash one dash forty-two dash fourteen and forty-six dash one dash forty dash one from MXB mixed business and RG five general residential to LI light industrial, Ms. Tate.
Thank you. So this rezoning this evening for 300 North Augusta Avenue, this shows the location of the property. You can see that it's bounded by the railroad to the north, off of North Augusta Avenue, between North Bath Avenue and Bayard Avenue. So the applicant is requesting to rezone from mixed business to light industrial. The property has been home to construction-related companies since the 1950s. The applicants have cleaned up the property and cleared it. They worked, they had some concerns about trash dumping and some homeless encampments within the property. And they have cleared the property and they have put an eight-foot screened chain link fence installed around it. And if you'll remember, they did recently come to council to have a right-of-way vacation request approved and have purchased that right-of-way to kind of expand that property. So their intent is to use the property to store fencing materials related to their business. This map just shows that the area is made up of a mix of residential and also commercial and industrial uses. The proposed zoning change, the current zoning is mixed business on one portion of the property and general residential on the other. And the request is to change the entire zoning of the property to light industrial, which is intended for low-intensity manufacturing and industrial activities. And this blue outline represents the entire area of request. And you can see that the portion that is brown is the mixed-business zoning and the portion that is kind of that orange color is the residential zoning. And then the area where you don't see any color and you see just the underlying aerial, that is area of the vacated right-of-way. So it would be to kind of rezone that entire area now for light industrial use. The comprehensive plan does designate the property for medium-density residential, so the proposed request does not match the land use map. But as was previously stated, the surrounding area is a mix of residential and industrial and commercial uses. The proposed zoning is an upzoning, so it does increase the intensity of permitted uses that would be allowed on the property. The applicant does also own the parcel between the property and the closest residential house. And they intend to leave that as a buffer, so they're not requesting to change the zoning on that property. They've constructed an eight-foot screened chain link fence that kind of screens the interior of the property, where the materials are stored. And then there are twenty-foot alleys that run along either side of the property that kind of serves as an additional buffer. The applicant has proffered that a Class C buffer would be installed if any portion of the fence is removed. And then lastly, they have also proffered that the hours of operation would be limited to seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. So the area in blue, outlined in blue, is the area of the proposed rezoning request. And the parcel that is outlined in yellow represents that parcel that's also owned by the applicant and is intended to be left there as a buffer of residential zoning. This is a picture of the fence that has been installed. And then that lot, that kind of buffer lot, you can see right there that already has some existing vegetation, which would remain. So the property's accessed from North Augusta Avenue. There really is no expected change in their existing levels of traffic. It's an existing business. They plan to store materials outside and have kind of a storage yard, although it would be screened. But that's the reasoning for needing the light industrial zoning designation. All utilities are present at the location. The property that's directly in front of this property is a business. Then there's adjacent residential. And then overall, the area is kind of a mixture of residential, industrial, and commercial uses. The rezoning would bring the property into conformance with the zoning ordinance. The area has historically served as a mixture of uses. And the proffers would help mitigate any impacts to adjacent residential uses. So staff and the planning commission do recommend approval with the proffers, including the hours of operation and that a Class C buffer be installed if the fence were ever to come down. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions from Ms. Tate? Okay. There are no questions. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance rezoning 300 North Augusta Avenue from MXB mixed business to RG five general residential to LI light industrial?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Okay. This ordinance will be subject to a public hearing and receive final consideration at the March 25 meeting. Item seven is to consider designating certain areas of revitalization areas for purposes of low-income housing tax credit applications. Ms. Tate?
Okay. These requests were covered at your last meeting, but I will speak on them again briefly. These, there are two separate developers who plan to submit for low-income housing tax credits through the state application process. And so these requests would be to designate those areas where they plan to do those types of development as revitalization areas, which is defined in state code. And that would help them compete for those credits. And it is a very competitive process. So one is located at 1030 Alston Court and the other is located at 1008 B Street. So this map represents the Alston Court property, outlined in red. And you can see that there is some adjacent apartment development with the Brandon Lad apartments. There's adjacent townhomes and duplexes. And then certainly, a lot of adjacent medical and commercial uses within the area. This aerial shows the other property at 1008 B Street. You can also see that there are some adjacent apartment development as well as other residential and commercial uses. The zoning of both properties is multifamily, so there isn't any type of entitlements that need to be changed as part of this request. They are zoned for apartment development. And this map shows that the area in brown is zoned residential multifamily. You have highway business in red and then other types of residential uses adjacent also. The same with the 1008 B Street property. It is zoned for multifamily development as is being proposed. And the comprehensive plan designates the Alston Court property as high-density residential as it is zoned, which is a little different than the B Street property, which the comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates for medium-density residential, although it is, as I mentioned, already zoned for apartments. So the revitalization area request, it's defined in Virginia Code and it kind of allows one of two definitions. And so the one that staff is proposing related to these is the second, that the industrial, commercial, or other economic development of such area will benefit the city, but such area lacks the housing needed to induce manufacturing, industrial, commercial, governmental, educational, entertainment, community development, healthcare, or nonprofit enterprises or undertakings to locate or remain in such area. And private enterprise and investment are not reasonably expected without assistance to produce the construction or rehabilitation of decent, safe, and sanitary housing and supporting facilities that will meet the needs of low- and moderate-income persons and families in such area and will induce other persons and families to live within such area and thereby create a desirable economic mix of residents in the area. This is a conceptual layout. I will point out that these have gone through multiple iterations and will continue to change. So we're not as wedded to the specific layout because all of these, both of these projects have to go through site plan approval and all the typical types of development reviews that all developments go through within the city. But this just shows kind of a general layout of one entrance off of Alston Court and then the required parking and building layouts and buffering that would be required as part of our ordinance. And then this, we've seen updated plans since this, but this is just a general kind of layout of one iteration for the B Street property. And so the applicant has, both applicants have requested that the city designate both areas as a revitalization area through a resolution. And that would give them increased points as they compete for those low-income housing tax credits through an application that's due in the next couple of days.
Are there any questions? Nope. Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I've asked a lot of questions of both developers and learned a lot. And based on what I found out, I think that the designation of both locations would be in the best interest. And I would urge my colleagues to support.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, for those attending tonight, I would like to just point out that we did have a public hearing during our February 26 meeting regarding this. And we just, it was a request by some of the council members who just needed some clarification on a few points that we tabled until tonight. And so we're, here we are tonight. If there's.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I was the one who made the motion for the tabling. And I'd just like to say thanks to the developers and the staff for helping laying this out a little bit and being patient with us till we got the details to see what we can, how we can move forward in the best interest of Waynesboro.
Okay, with that said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution designating those parcels associated with the proposed 1030 Alston Court project?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that resolution passes. On the second one, is there a motion to adopt the resolution designating the parcels associated with the proposed 1008 B Street project?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that also passes four to zero. Moving on to item eight, that's to receive a presentation of the planning commission's 2023 annual budget. Ms. Tate?
All right. So I'm going to run through some of the planning commission's work in the previous year. So some of the development highlights. We did one zoning text amendment for multifamily building density requirements in our non-residential districts. We did three rezonings at 1930 Rossar Avenue, which was a PUD to highway business. At Zero Bryant Drive, there was a proffer amendment considered, which was tabled by council. And we continued to work with the developer on that. And then also 1010 East Main Street, the Metal Crafters Building. We did a rezoning to, you know, more accurately reflect the mixture of uses occurring on that property. We did five conditional use permits for various different items and then two preliminary plats. One is the Hopeman-Gilford subdivision, which was 163 townhouse lots. And then also the Rossar Avenue subdivision, which is eighty townhouse lots. And this chart just shows development applications reviewed since 2013. And, you know, it kind of ebbs and flows every year from, you know, whether you have more rezonings or not or more preliminary plats. But this just shows kind of the general layout of the types of requests that have been reviewed by the planning commission. This similarly just shows the layout. So the conditional use permits are in blue. The preliminary plats, green, and the rezonings are in red. And you can see that they're fairly spread out throughout the city. Our construction, especially residential construction, remains strong. Construction continues at Ivy Commons and Creekwood Village subdivisions. The final phases of Evershire are also under construction. And as previously mentioned, two preliminary plats were approved also in 2023. This chart shows new residential building permits. So building has remained consistent since 2019. 2023 saw an increase in new building permits. And you can see how they've kind of been steadily rising. We had 165 single-family permits and three multifamily issued last year. So some other planning efforts, the West Main and Broad Street street scape projects. Those projects were funded in the 2020 round of Smart Scale. Both of those are VDOT administered projects. The West Main project from Hopeman to Ludwitt, replacing the center turn lane with a planted median and adding a continuous sidewalk on one side. The engineering is underway and we held a public information meeting in November of 2023. The Broad Street project is a little behind that, but is, will beautify, increase safety, and add pedestrian improvements. And the engineering is also underway. And we expect additional public meetings for both of those projects to be held this year. Brownfield's grant work continues. We've completed several Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments, including a Phase Two for the Natural History Museum site and a Phase One for the Waynesboro Commerce and Industry Park. We continue with outreach and have, our consultants have attended several community events to kind of spread the word about those grant funds. And then also met quarterly with the Brownfield Steering Committee. The Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program, we completed a multi-year project, a pedestrian refuge, crossing, and sidewalk at Fourth Street, crossing of Delphine, added a missing block of sidewalk on Fourth Street and the pedestrian island. And that was completed in the previous year. For other transportation-related grants, the city was awarded around $800,000 for intersection safety improvements in the 2022 H-SIP applications. And those included high-visibility signal backplates, flashing yellow left-turn arrows, and some pedestrian crossing treatments. Staff submitted three additional applications in the last round. Those three covered nine different unsignalized intersection improvements, 25 different pedestrian crossing treatments, and one curve delineation application as well. And we have not heard yet about the H-SIP funds, but expect to soon. Additional grants, so Smart Scale Round Five, which was the last round. The city was awarded funding for two projects, the main Broad-Rossar Roundabout and the I-64 westbound exit 94 exit ramp improvements. And then the Smart Scale is every two years. And so we are in, Smart Scale Round Six is open now and pre-applications are open for this month. And the city is eligible to submit four applications. And those are scored by safety, congestion, mitigation, accessibility, economic development, and environmental quality. And as you all are aware, but it's a state competitive process for those projects. And so we're looking to finalize those applications this spring. Staff was recently presented on some data related to the regional housing study that the CSPDC kicked off in spring of 2022 with locality and stakeholder meetings. The data analysis has mostly wrapped up. And now individual locality-specific solutions are being identified. The study is expected to be completed in this year and will provide detailed information about the status of housing and then recommendations for localities. And it covers all the different localities within the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission's purview. The Stanton August Wayne's Metropolitan Planning Organization has also been working on the Afton Mountain Traffic Studies, so examining US 250, Route 610 and the surrounding vicinity for traffic operations, safety, access management, the potential for bike-ped accommodations on 250 from the western parking lot of the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail to the Blue Ridge Parkway. And this planning effort is really intended to support future redevelopment. And then looking ahead, we look forward to a comprehensive plan update. And that's something that the planning commission will definitely be very involved in in the coming years. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions? No?
I think just related to the Smart Scale applications, are you expecting to at least alert council to that prior to making, considering what your applications might be?
Yes, sir.
We had our first meeting with VDOT on Friday. And so just starting that, but yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Item nine is to receive a presentation from the library's annual report by library director Susan Varson. Susan?
Good evening. Let my colleague get the slides up. There'll be a noticeable difference between the planning commissions and the libraries.
I hope so.
Hopefully. Okay, all right. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to reinforce the stereotype that librarians have terrible senses of humor. So do we have more than books? Do we ever? So there you go. So first, this is our mission and vision statement. These guide what the library does and why we do it. These statements feed into our strategic plan, which is set to expire in 2026, but is currently built on six pillars. Having a balanced collection. Part of this is having digital and physical collection that's accessible to our public and community. Supporting early literacy through programs and collections, all literacy, really. Library technology, increasing this both inside the building and what people can access off-site. Programs and services, continuing to increase these to find out, to provide more to our community. Also increase our marketing and outreach so people know what we have, where it is, and how to find it. And then building improvements. So working on that. Currently, our elevator is working to be improved. So this is a slide that shows you a comparison over the past four years. The good news is I love the column on the right because everything keeps going up. And so that's where we are this year, or last fiscal year. Circulation's up, foot traffic is almost back to pre-pandemic levels. The most interesting graph to me on here is the e-resources, which even post-pandemic, our digital resource checkout and circulation continues to rise. So that means what we're providing, people are looking to get even outside the library. The computer use is declining, but again, that makes sense. People have a lot more of their own devices. Collection and circulation. So this is a little bit about what we actually have in the building and what we have virtually that you can receive from the library with a library card. And you have what we've checked out. And just a brief comparison. So you see 2023 up there. So far in 2024, we have circulated 124,000 items and a little over 17,000 digital items. So our physical and digital collections are one way we fulfill our mission to create a balanced collection with diverse formats. And this is a little bit about our patrons. So this is who's coming into our building currently. The most interesting number, again, on this to me is actually our Wi-Fi sessions. This is a new number we're collecting. So that's 38,000 sessions just in fiscal year 2024 alone. To give you a comparison, last, this time last year, we're up 25% over last February for Wi-Fi sessions. And what this means is people are coming into our building. So they're using our spaces. You know, they're using the main study spaces, the study rooms, the conference rooms, the programs room, the children's rooms, the internet cafe. So we're very excited to see that. The chart itself is a demographic breakdown by age for our population, our cardholders, I should say. Not surprisingly, it reflects what we're seeing generally with population aging. So 26% of our cardholders are 60 and older. And this information kind of influences some of our programming decisions and collection development. So some of our accomplishments, I'm not going to read all of them. I'm just going to highlight some of the ones that we're excited about. Well, we're excited about all of them, but I'm just going to highlight a few. So we got two grants this year, one from Penguin Random House and a welcoming grant, welcoming library grant. Those, both of those were in-kind book donations. So they helped add to our Spanish collection. And the welcoming library grant was specifically for children's books for new families, new immigrant families to the United States. So we are excited to get those. We've added databases to our collection. We've also added a new digital services librarian. Again, this will help inform some of our programming to provide better support and service to our community. Early literacy, always a strong popular programming choice. With our storytimes, we've started a play and learn program. We've continued to do more outreach. And I'll come back to Community in Motion, which is a joint project with area nonprofits and the Office on Youth. And we use it as a book bus. I should go back. We should also say with library technology, we added wireless printing, so that's very popular. We continue to increase our programs and services, both by number and type. And our outreach, we continue to do more going out into the community. We've created a schedule of visiting some area rehabilitation and retirement communities. So we're taking them services and books and signing them up for library cards. And we're also going out in Community in Motion to low-income housing developments. And then the Little Free Food Pantry, which is in conjunction with Neighbor Bridge, opened in August of 2023. And just in that part of that calendar year, we distributed almost 1,200 pounds of food directly into the Waynesboro community. And 2024, so far, we've distributed 200 and almost 230 pounds of food. So we're very excited about that partnership. These are just some pictures. So Poppy, our lovely little red panda, who's our new mascot, which was part of our programming initiative, was designed by the young lady up in the right-hand picture. So these are just some of the spaces and uses that we've had this year. So we had a winter market. We had Santa at the library. We had some people come see us. That was great. Mr. Wood and Mr. Lee visited. You'll see the Little Free Food Pantry in the middle there with our dinosaur, our brave staff member who dressed up in the dinosaur costume. So we have lots of fun at the library, so. So I'm going to talk a little bit about services, and we are definitely more than just books. So services include what we have for the community and what we do. And we definitely have more than books, so I'm just going to highlight a few of them, especially things people don't think about being at a library. So some of the things we have that you may not consider are part of a normal library service are things like the seed library. So we have seeds you can get for free. We have free COVID tests currently. We have museum passes, state park passes, steam kits. So if you want to try a new hobby, but you don't want to invest in all the equipment, you can come check one of those out. Book club kits. We also, with Augusta Health, have some Bright Bus passes that we distribute to the community. And then digitally, I'm going to highlight a few databases that I think are important to know about. News Bank, which allows you access to local, regional, and national newspapers, again, free anywhere you have internet and a library card. We also have several databases that are great for job seekers, JobNow and VetNow. They provide resume help, live virtual conversations for, you know, application process, interview process. VetNow is geared specifically for military personnel who are transitioning into the civilian workforce. And then we have some databases that provide training courses. LinkedIn Learning is probably a familiar name. And then Universal Class, so if you're trying to brush up on some skills or you're in that interview process and you want to just get some better training, we have those. Again, free with your library card, anywhere with an internet connection. Transparent Language is also is another resource that we have. So if, again, you're trying to brush up on a language, just try to remember getting ready to travel, getting ready for a job, we've got you covered. So. And then what can we do for you? So we have things that you can take home, that you can use digitally remotely, but we love for you to come in. So these are things we can do for you in the library. And it makes it a community hub. And so we have, I'm going to highlight three that have been very popular this past year. Our display spaces, our meeting rooms, and our study rooms. Again, we have three study rooms that are constantly booked. People come in, they use them for tutoring, they use them for interview. You know, everybody's doing Zoom meetings or Zoom interviews now, telehealth, quiet studies. You know, local entrepreneurs can come in and use this space. Wireless printing with our Wi-Fi and wireless printing, you can do quite a bit in the library right now. And then programming. This is something people traditionally think of coming from a library, but we've been really creative this year. And so this is some of the visuals of them. In 2023, we had a total of 381 programs with a little over 6,000 attendees. This year so far, we've had 333 programs with 6,400 attendees. So as of early March, we are almost to the same number of programs we had last year, and we've surpassed the number of attendees over the last year. So having our meeting room and program spaces back is making a huge difference. So thank you for getting the registrar the space that she deserves and needs and returning the library spaces back to their intended community use. The programming staff has been incredibly creative this past year, and so I'm going to highlight just a few of them. The Canva class, which is done by our marketing specialist, Kathy Heizerman, has been very popular and always has a waitlist. The Nerf battle started out as a teen program, and I literally can tell you the adults demanded their own version. So we have adults Nerf battles. It's wonderful. We've done ghost talks, craft supply swaps. And then I want to highlight dementia friends. I'll come back to them. We're trying to move some of our programming to be more inclusive of people living with dementia. Just a shout out for our social media. These are Bookface Fridays. They're very popular. If you haven't liked us, please do. And then our partnerships. So we have a dedicated outreach and engagement coordinator who's done a great job creating closer partnerships and expanding our outreach. All the staff participate in this, but Rachel McDowell has pursued opportunities to expand our services, especially to some underserved areas and communities. And we do this a lot with Community in Motion, again, that shared vehicle where we go out bi-monthly and take books and sign people up for library cards. And it allows people who can't physically get to the library still have access to our resources. We're hoping to expand that service in the new year, so. And then looking to the future. So we want to continue to meet the needs of our community. Programs, we're going to continue that. And again, I'm going to highlight the dementia-friendly library because this is important to me and the staff in general. We've all received training. We're working closely with VPaaS on programming specifically for people living with dementia and their caregivers. We're holding an open house in May for our memory partners program, so we'd love for everybody to join us. And this is a program dedicated for people living with dementia, their caregivers to come and do a program together, and something that they can do, and it's geared specifically to that population. We also have an art and care program, which is for caregivers. I don't want to say it's a support group because you get to do something fun, but opportunity to talk to people having a similar experience. We're working on a new, well, we will have to start working on a new strategic plan because ours expires. We need to have a new one in place in 2026, so we'll start trying to figure out how to survey our community and find out if we are providing what they want and what they need and how we can improve our services. And then just looking at our physical plant as well. And then coming soon, because everybody should sign up for summer reading, it's not just for kids anymore. It's for grownups and their prizes, and it's fun. And then the second image there is Rachel Beanland, and I want to highlight her because she's a regional author. She's written about 1811 Richmond Theater Fire. She's going to be at the Virginia Festival of the Book, but she's also going to be at Waynesboro April 6th. Wildlife Center will be here this Saturday. If, I believe the opossum, opossum is coming. I'm not sure of the mystery guest. But, and then our Renaissance Fair, April 13th, 10 to 2. It's an all-day thing. We'll have our Friends of the Library book sale as well. So we'd love to see everybody there. And then because I work with such great people, I couldn't leave without showing you some of their smiling faces. So all the staff at the library work really hard to make it a welcoming community hub. And these are some of the faces you see when you walk in the door. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Susan. Any questions, comments from council?
I just think Melville Dewey would be happy you referred to him in your presentation.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay. Item 10 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $1,150,000 to the Refuge Fund for transfer to the regional landfill. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of council. The attached budget amendment and appropriation ordinance totaling $1,150,000 is intended to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget. The amendment is necessary to transfer funds to the landfill for capital needs. It is funded through net position in the Refuge Fund and fund balance in the General Fund. And just for some general awareness, the City of Waynesboro is partners with Augusta County and the City of Stanton in a regional landfill. They've had to undertake some large capital projects that include equipment and a new phase to store trash at the active landfill. The city has spent a couple of budget cycles saving these funds. And at the end of each budget cycle, the appropriation lapses. So this combines a couple of years and appropriates it and also appropriates funds that were saved in the General Fund to go towards these projects as well. A couple of housekeeping items on this. It can be introduced and seconded this evening and discussed, and then it can go to council's consent agenda at the next meeting. It isn't large enough to need a public hearing, so we won't need a public hearing at the next meeting. We will at the next meeting need to amend the fund balance policy because the commitment, the commitment in the General Fund is called out. So I'll bring a red line fund balance policy just to take that line out and make sure that everything stays in good order before the audit starts at the end of the fiscal year. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Are there any questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance appropriating $1,150,000 to transfer to the regional landfill?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, and a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This ordinance will receive final consideration at the March 25th meeting. Item 11 is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
Pardon me. I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, thank you. Then that takes us to item 12, which is citizen comment period. Do you have some people signed up?
I do. First is William Wells.
If you could just state your name and address for our records. And I'd just like to remind anybody who signs up to speak that you have four minutes to address council. Thank you so much.
William Wells. I live at 1117 Alston Court, and I wanted to make a couple of comments. I'm sorry I couldn't be here a couple of weeks ago when they had the hearing. But there are a couple of things. We have another apartment complex on Windermere down below us between Alston Court and the interstate. And we get a lot of traffic coming through there that comes, they can't, they don't have access to Hollins Road, so they have to come up and come through Alston and then go down Chatham to get over toward Lenter's Road. And that adds quite a bit of traffic to our area. This new subdivision would also add a lot more. I would hope, I would like to see them look at some way to get an egress to, directly to Rossar. They could come in behind Sheets or behind the hospital. There's also a street there across from Lennox Place that the round apartment office is in that right now. But that could be an egress that would allow them to get out. Having all those people come out on Alston Court and into Chatham with all the other traffic, I think would be a safety issue and a maintenance issue for the city later on. Something that would help it, there is a street that is in place, but it has bollards across it from the Windermere Apartments over to Hollins Road. And if that was opened up, I think that would alleviate some of the problem for us now and for the people that if we do, we will definitely have some sort of development in there one of these days. So I think they ought to consider some other traffic pattern to move traffic instead of just everything coming out there right there in Alston Court. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Greg Muestrick or Mustrick?
I'm with Wanda Cooper. I don't, I'll keep it short. Thank you for the vote in favor of the revite resolution tonight. We look forward to working with you, you know, now and hopefully when we're funded on the deal. Thank you.
Donna Yobbs?
Hi. Wanted to thank you for voting for the revitalization designation and letting developers know we welcome affordable housing in our city. The other item is, I think the points some of the neighbors of Alston Quarter making is really interesting for our strategic planning. You know, what are traffic flows? What can we do to alleviate it? Can we have an ingress from Rossar into the neighborhood, but not an out traffic, things like that? And neighbors also mentioned some drainage issues. And the last item was, the River City Bread Basket has used the library services to, they bring their books there. They bring a card maker, so a lot of people are able to get books that have never made it to the library. So that's been a fabulous thing.
Thank you.
Jeff Feith?
Members of council, Jeff Feith, 1635 Chatham Road, wrote sort of a repeat of what you guys have heard on the traffic side of things. I appreciate the recommendations of cutting through into Rossar if at all possible. As a two-time-a-day dog walker for a while, pre-Windermere and post-Windermere, there's a lot more traffic on Chatham now than on Tiffany. And a comment that I would have is when the city reviews, and I don't know if it's a public works issue when they review the priorities of snow removal. Chatham has always remained a third or fourth priority, and Tiffany was the main channel that people were exiting out there on that light on Rossar. But since Windermere has opened up, everyone comes across Chatham and then goes up and out there. And we're still third or fourth on the list to get sort of snowplowed in that area. So increasing, you know, keeping in mind the safety and traffic concerns of that neighborhood. If we add 96 more units right there and dumping it out across potentially right from where Chatham is, going to add, I don't know, a little bit more action in there. So any attention to safety detail, traffic rerouting, and then when snow removal comes, making us a little bit more of a priority since Chatham is usually, Tiffany's well done before us. And I think now we're a lot more traffic than Tiffany. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Dan Babish?
Good evening. Dan Babish, 1632 Chatham Road. I'd also like to speak to the traffic concerns on Alston and Chatham. And just some other points that may not have been brought up is that quite a bit of heavy pedestrian traffic around Chatham, especially as the temperatures warms up in the spring. So please take that into consideration. And also the, the traffic light at Windy Grove and Rossar. I know it was brought up last year when there was an agenda item for the Windy Grove Apartments to expand. And this, this proposal is just adding more traffic to that light. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That brings us to item 13. We were scheduled to have a closed session tonight, but I'm going to call Mr. Hamp. We're just not going to have it.
Correct.
Okay, so the city manager advises that a closed session is not needed at this time. That brings us to item 14, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short, for doing that for Mr. Allen in his absence. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor say aye. Aye? I don't hear our, okay. That motion, we are adjourned.
I was waiting on it.